All right, we're going to get started then. Welcome, everybody, to City of Tumwater's Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, at seven P M. And our meeting is called to order. I'll do the roll call like usual. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Staff is excused. Vice Chair Tobias?
Here.
Great. Commissioner Varela?
Here.
With me, Commissioner Robbins. Great. Forum, ready to roll. Um, are there any changes to our agenda?
No.
Um, do any commissioners have anything you want to report on? Maybe it counts. All right. Uh, Brad, how about our manager's report?
Uh, so we provided you with the most current planning commission meeting schedule in your packet and call of a couple of highlights. Number one, your meeting, uh, first meeting in March is getting canceled. Uh, we'll be meeting on the twenty sixth, I believe, uh, for the first meeting in March. Uh, we are also scheduled to do a less tour with the city council on April sixth. Uh, we are in the process right now of putting together the itinerary. Uh, the intent is to have the commission and the council travel together. Hopefully no mistakes. We'll try to work out the, uh, details of stopping points and discussion points along the way. But the idea is kind of showing you some examples of middle housing that we'll be dealing with and how that could be ideas can be incorporated into some of our design policies going forward. As well as have a general discussion with some of the housing issues.
And that will be, um, uh, strictly within the city of Tumwater or?
It will be the city of Tumwater. We, we are talking about potentially going into Olympia. So we'll be close then, but we, uh, we want to find appropriate examples in appropriate neighborhoods.
Yeah. And you, the, the date on here is April ninth?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good deal. I think we have another joint session with them much later, though, a few months, a few months out.
Yeah, so you'll notice, starting in, uh, June, July, and August, we'll be doing some joint work sessions as well. Uh, taking up development code, housing, uh, climate, economic development, and transportation. So.
Thanks. I know I find this, I know you have to update it a lot, but it's helpful to kind of get the?
Yeah, and you, you'll notice, um, on the back, I've included through twenty twenty five. Now, the assumption on the back page is that the state legislature will pass a six month extension of our deadline for getting everything done by June thirty for the complant update to the end of December. So, subject to legislative approval, we said.
I have a little bit of a grace period.
For maybe.
You got enough, you got enough to go.
Yeah.
Um, anything else, Brad? Got a helicopter going over, so it might be a little hard to hear on the audio here. Um, uh, do we have anybody here for public comment online? Looks like Mr. Twaney from. Hi, welcome, Mr. Twaney. Would you like to address the planning commission tonight?
Uh, yeah, hello. Uh, good evening. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Freddie, thanks for being here. And we have some, some guests, some students, representatives. I don't know if you all would like to say? Great. Glad you're here, too. Um, let's go into our, uh, seventh order of business, uh, the, uh, complant update, the community outreach report.
Um, would like to, the purpose of this update is to give you, um, sort of the back, no, excuse me, look, back up. We had a open house, uh, very first open house for the planning commission, uh, January thirty first, and we have put together, uh, a summary of what we heard, both the online comments and the in-person elements we put together. Um, and we've also, as part of this process, wanted to talk a little bit more detail of the other community outreach things that will be coming up and what we're looking at currently as part of this process. So uh, again, status report of our community outreach activities. Uh, and also some outline of the activities that will be coming up this year. Uh, again, this is building on the work that we've already done for the public engagement plan, uh, following that outline, making some changes we need to respond to different things. Uh, we have definitely started the process of engaging and consulting with the community. Uh, we, we were driven in part by some new state requirements, especially as part of the housing element update and the climate element that have very specific things on that we need to be focusing on, uh, in engaging communities that have not been able to be part of this process in the past. Uh, so we'll be doing different things as part of this process that we haven't been able to do in the past. Again, the whole objective of the community engagement process is to provide the community and the stakeholders meaningful opportunities to participate in the periodic update process and throughout the update. Um, as a quick aside for the planning commissioners, we are now focusing right now on identifying, uh, various community members and community groups related to housing. Uh, all community economic groups and so forth. If you are aware of any people that you think need to be on that contact list or organizations, please let us know. Uh, we're going to be doing a broad discussion. We're going to have some individual meetings with folks to sort of start that process, uh, in the next couple of months, and then we'll sort of build up as part of that to go to the larger updating processes through that effort. But we're really looking for opportunities to talk to broader groups than the other members. Uh, just as a reminder, the community engagement plan identifies tactics, strategies, and platforms, uh, intended to inform and consult the community throughout the update. Again, this whole process is intended to be flexible. Um, we have been very fortunate that we have some good young planners on board, Erica and Alex, who you've probably met as part of the open house and other things. Uh, they're bringing a lot of stuff that I'm not aware of in terms of online things that we can use and other strategies, especially from their own previous experience in other jurisdictions. A reminder of sort of the five steps for this whole update. Uh, step one and throughout is engaging with community. Uh, two, gathering and analyzing data. Uh, we are probably close to finishing that work. Uh, we are bringing on consultants. We have a consultant now for middle housing, development code updates. Uh, we have a couple consultants that would have responded to the climate element, uh, the grant application that we're hoping to interview next week and hopefully have a decision on that. So they'll be involved in that side of the process. On the transportation side, we have two respondents to the RFP that came out for that that we're also probably going to be interviewing very shortly. Similar timeline for them, uh, to really get some additional help there, pulling, uh, things together. We are still in the process of identifying and working through an RFQ process for the economic development. So I'll give you an update once I have something on that. We've also started the policy evaluation process. Erica has been busy at work creating huge tables uh, that we may or may not share with you, depending on how well you guys feel, if you want to be scared or not. Uh, but in all seriousness, our intent is to really hone in and focus in on our, our policies and make them much more active, much more usable by the council and the commission. Uh, the policy revision steps will be taking, starting to take place later this year in year twenty five. And we'll also, at the same time, be reviewing and updating our regulations that are associated with it. So, uh, we have a, a big work task ahead of us. The good news is the legislature has passed or looking to pass some bills, but not a whole lot this session, which is good. They keep changing the overall things that are required to do. Uh, as a reminder, uh, our project website has all of the documents associated with the op, uh, the update there. Uh, this is just a snapshot of the page. Uh, we include our product schedules, city meetings. Uh, all of the draft elements as they're produced are located there. All of the guidance documents that have come from the state are also located, as well as the presentations of staff reports for planning commission and city councils for all the topics that we talked through last year and up to this year. We have completed our first online survey, uh, closed on February fourteenth. Uh, we had, actually, we are now I believe our final count was about nine hundred and twenty responses. So we're quite pleased with that. Our intent is the second meeting in March, we'll be talking about what we heard and sort of the broader uh, responses that we had and focus areas. Uh, we were also very fortunate that a number of people uh, as part of that survey identified that they really want to be talking about some very specific issues as part of this update, whether it's housing or transportation or climate. Uh, so we have a, we have a good place to start with all that. I talked a little bit about our initial open house. Uh, again, as part of the housing update, we'll be having individual conversations with different organizations in the next couple of months. Uh, sort of set the framework for the larger work that we will need to be doing. Uh, our intent is to, uh, and you'll see as we discuss this further in the presentation, we'll have some more opportunities for focused hybrid open houses, meaning unlike the initial open house where we had online and in person at the same time, uh, we'll have an online component that will be open for a couple of weeks for people to come on, take a look, provide comment, ask questions, and so forth. That will then close after two weeks and we'll, we'll take that data. We'll also have a one-time, uh, in-person evening meeting as part of that process. So there'll be an in-person and an online component going forward for both of those.
Will there be opportu, sorry to interrupt, Fred, but will there be opportunities if, um, if either we suggest a group to, to reach out to, um, or somebody pops up and says, hey, I'd like you to come to my meeting or something? Will there be opportunities for that kind of?
Yes.
How we should?
Yeah, and if you're aware, again, if you're aware of organizations or people that we should be talking to, please let us know.
Okay.
Our intent is to, to go out first and then
Try to get to folks.
Try to get to folks where they are, talk to them where they are, and then have the open houses as sort of the broad background.
Good.
So our initial, uh, open house agenda, we, it was a two-hour, uh, hybrid meeting. Uh, we spent the first five minutes sort of laying out what the open house process looked like and talking about, uh, introducing the staff and the topics. We had a series of online polls and we also had written polls for those folks who didn't have, uh, handheld device or anything in person. So we tabulated both of those. And then we had about an hour and ten minutes for, uh, well, we, we did a presentation on the staff on the out, uh, on the update, what we're looking at. And then we had a conversation, uh, with the community, asking various questions and trying to respond in person uh, as part of that. And then we had a summary and closed as part of that. So we had sixteen people, uh, attend virtually. Uh, we had forty-three people in person uh, to go with the seven staff. That was better than what we anticipated. Uh, with the online survey and everything, we, we anticipated we'd have a higher number than usual. This was a good number of people to start off with. We intend to do more. Uh, so I want to talk a little bit about some of the questions that we asked and the responses. Uh, the majority of the people who attended own a home in the city. Uh, that is not necessarily reflective of our total population, though, because about forty, forty-five percent rent in the city. So that means we have a lot of folks that were not part of that process, part of that open house. So we, that's a part of this is to identify who was attended and who wasn't there. And so we'll be touching on that. In terms of work, it was, uh, it was a lot of mi- mixed match. For a little background information, in Tumwater, we have about twenty-seven thousand people. We have about twenty-six to twenty-seven thousand jobs in the city. So we have a pretty good balance of, of employment and residents in the city. Um, however, not too unusual. Most people live or work elsewhere and come, come into the city for other things. So we're also going to be trying to expand what we need, what we can do to try to capture those folks who work in the city as part of the economic development side of things, as well as the people owning this race and ethnicity. Uh, as you can see, this was pretty heavily, uh, towards the white, a little bit of Hispanic. And what that does is it doesn't really reflect the community according to the most recent census. Uh, we have about a little under eighty percent white now. Uh, and then a, a mix of other races that we are trying to identify community organizations to reach out and talk to. So this is, again, is just a snapshot from one meeting, one open house. This was interesting for those of us who, um, who want to know, well, how do you know, how do you know what's going on? Because things really, really change over time. Obviously, social media plays a huge role now as, as well as word of mouth. Uh, unfortunately, newspapers didn't even rank on this, uh, for those of us who grew up, you know, back in the dark ages last century. Uh, that's a big change. Uh, but it tells us we've got a lot of other ways to use and we have to hit a lot of different things in order to try and get people to come and participate. Some of the questions that were asked by the attendees, there was pretty, pretty overall, uh, over the, covering a lot of things because, again, we were sort of doing it exactly the whole process. Uh, first question is more, how are more essential facilities like schools and social services going to be addressed as part of the update? Uh, we have, uh, for example, was the, we work with the Tumwater School District, we Olympia School District as part of their capital planning process to inform them of what is coming in terms of our population, what our land use is going to look like. So we'll be bringing them into the process through that process. Uh, questions about when the survey results will be posted. We'll be doing that, uh, probably in the first part of next month. Uh, a very specific question about the city trying to attract specific businesses or identify things that are lacking. Uh, definitely part of the economic development process. And, uh, one thing that we have uh, a need to do as part of that process is we did an update of the plan about five years ago. That was before COVID. Uh, things have changed a lot. And so we are, need to do another data dive to figure out what we have, first of all, and then try to answer those other questions. Uh, in the past, we've identified specific economic development targets like the brewery district. And that's why the, the city has supported the craft district development. Has a way to be a catalyst to power redevelopment of the brewery site. That's still a priority, but I think there are other things that are coming online, especially with the new mayor and the new city administrator. Uh, affordable housing was a big, big, big question asked at the open house. We had some very personal stories about how, how will my children be able to afford to live in their home? Um, we said, we don't know, which unfortunately is not the best answer, but it's one thing that we definitely know we need to be working on. Uh, we had some very good people that wanted to be involved in how to address those things, so we're definitely going to be talking with them about that. We had some specific questions about the housing projections and what those are, are, uh, state numbers that were given down to the counties. And in turn, the counties worked with the cities to allocate, uh, housing for the next twenty years to all the jurisdictions. Uh, we'll go into a deeper dive on that once the TRPC adopts the preliminary numbers. Uh, we're pretty close to that. I anticipate the first part of next month, they'll finish that process, but that will be driving a lot of the things we do on the housing side. Uh, how will density, land use, and zoning designations change? All of these things basically are, uh, how and where can people develop and to what intensity? Uh, there will be changes, uh, anticipated because of a need to accommodate, uh, housing for all economic classes, which is a new state requirement. Uh, that means probably some increases in density to make, uh, particular developments more appropriate. Uh, but we'll be working through what that's going to look like once we finish the land capacity analysis that we're working on right with the TRPC. A lot of questions about the East Street Extension Project, which came out of the brewery district plan. Uh, we will be having a separate meeting and discussions about that project, uh, during the, uh, probably early part of this year. Uh, a lot of questions about old and reused sites being up for redevelopment. Brewery obviously is a big, big, big example of that, but there are other places that we are focusing on as well. Again, more questions about what to do about the housing crisis. Uh, we also had some questions about creating walkable neighborhoods and filling in gaps inside of us. Uh, one of that's, one of the emphasis of the transportation plan update will be, uh, walking, bicycling, other, other means of travel than just by car, which will be a, a change from our current plan. Uh, but it's something that we probably need to talk about prioritization of where new sidewalks should be. And also questions about how we fund all this. Where is the money going to come from? Providing housing services, water, sewer, and other things. So we asked three basic categories of what you're interested in. Grace, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Oh, yeah, no, thank you. Um, I was just wondering, so I think all of those questions were absolutely fantastic, and I really appreciate that people, um, asked them. Would it be possible to maybe take all of them or maybe even just some of them and create some type of like FAQ thing to put on the website? Would that be something appropriate? I'm just wondering that, you know, thinking that other people might have similar questions, and this might just be a good opportunity to create, you know, so again, some very basic kind of responses. Um, and I think, you know, what you told us is just perfect, um, and have those out there, and that might be interesting for people to, to be able to read.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very appropriate thing, and that's one of the things that we had identified as part of the public engagement plan of how we're going to respond to comments and questions. So what you suggested is exactly what we, we should be doing and putting up on the website. So we'll, we'll look to do that in the early, by, by next week, I think, as part of this process.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
So we have three big focus areas as part of the update. Again, affordable housing, climate and environment, and transportation. Uh, we had a pretty even interest in all of them. Um, there were some other categories that we were including in here. Uh, so there wasn't one big thing. It's sort of like interest across the board. In terms of housing, uh, we put out some suggested topics and pretty much everybody said, let's do all the above. Uh, so not only providing affordable housing, what density could look like and what housing types we could be assessing as part of middle housing. So we will be doing that. Climate, similar thing. Uh, addressing greenhouse gas emissions, how climate adaptations will be addressed and all those things. And then, of course, most people said, just tell us the whole story. Transportation, there was a great deal of interest in traffic forecasting and modeling. Uh, a little bit on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and access to public transportation. Uh, I think once we're into discussions with specific, uh, uh, changes to the plan, I think we'll, we'll tease out some more. Well, as part of the, uh, request for proposal process for the transportation plan update, there is a, a specific component, a specific task the city has for public engagement regarding transportation. So there will be the consultant will be helping us specifically with that, as well as specifically the climate on side of things.
Just, uh, Tim, a quick question on this. Was this an area where, uh, some of the walkability questions also came out? Um, kind of lumped in with bike ed or?
It was, yeah, there was an overlap between those concerns and other things. This also reflects some very specific concerns about specific projects and so.
Okay.
Uh, again, we wanted to ask how people wanted to find out. We asked the question, how did you find out? Uh, we've established a pretty large email list that will continually update as part of this process. Again, we talked a little bit about social media. Uh, a lot of people favor the utility bill inserts. We'll try to include those. The issue that we have about is the long lead time uh, between preparing what we need to do and doing that. But we'll, I think we'll be exploring that for some of the bigger things. And also how we could reach different particular people through. Uh, quick summary again on the update phases. Uh, we are, phase one, we'll be basically running through the end of the process. It's all the community engagement that we've been talking about. We are now in the plan development stage. Uh, mentioned the open houses on specific topics that we'll be having. Uh, planning commission, the council meetings on proposed amendments and proposed topics will continue. That's the whole schedule. That's part of your packet. And we're looking at twenty-five doing the whole legislative adoption process. We'll probably have multiple public hearings as part of this process, rather than one gigantic lump sum. Um, how that's going to be structured and when those are going to occur is going to be, to be determined. Uh, some jurisdictions have sort of started the public hearing process now. I think that's premature uh, because everything is interrelated. And I don't want to go back and have to revisit something multiple times as we're doing this process. Uh, again, we'll be updating you and the city council throughout the process and also all those means that we've identified for the community. Uh, I mentioned the joint tour that's coming up on April ninth. And we're also looking at one for, uh, August. We're working on the date. This is a provisional date. We're trying to uh, arrange for transportation first and how we're going to get around as part of this process. And also, this will require some coordination with the consultant, what works best in terms of their process. Uh, again, we've identified some joint work sessions that we'll have with the, with the city council. These will likely be starting in six o'clock. We'll let, give you guys a lot of notice about that. Uh, but again, the, the focuses will be development code, climate, uh, economic development, land use and development code, and also the work code. What probably listening from here is also no discussion for housing. So we'll do, we'll definitely be circling back on that. Uh, open houses, we have some dates, uh, that we've scheduled. Uh, this is the, again, the in-person one day and then the two weeks around, uh, for the hybrid or the online version. Uh, the end of May is what we're looking at for housing, end of July for climate, and October second for development code. Those are the, the first three that we anticipate. Again, if you have any comments or any concerns, uh, we have our complant email, or you could reach out to me, uh, as well as our website. So I think is the presentation. Were there any questions?
Sounds good. It's your time.
A question for you. There were a few of those, uh, in the survey responses. Um, I'm no data scientist, but generally speaking, when you have a survey option of, you know, uh, this, this, or this, or all of the above, uh, you're on the risk of, um, you know, people will kind of err on the side of, yeah, all that sounds good. I want to include it. Um, would it be possible for, um, other survey responses to say something like rank in order of importance or priority and be able to score it that way? So you might be able to see, uh, I, I don't, I don't know how you put it together, but be able to say, okay, like, this was the number one priority for this many people. Uh, this was the number two priority, number three. Uh, because then you can get a more weighted average of, uh, even though, like, you, you would make people have to say, like, okay, this one is the most important to me. This one is also pretty important, but not the most important. This one is less important, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that could be, uh, that, I don't know. I, I, I don't want to risk, uh, run the risk of creating what I call TBU data, true but useless, you know? Uh, you want to, you want to create usable data from something like that, but just a thought of, you know, if we have like a ranking of an order, uh, you know, ranked choice survey, essentially, I think could, could be useful for something like this.
And again, this was just, uh, some questions that were asked specifically for attendees of the open house. At the, the survey data, we did include some rank data. Uh, so at that end, we asked a lot more detailed questions. This was sort of a sound out, get an idea of what some of the things might be from in-person. Uh, but we're looking at the survey itself that we did. And again, that survey we did was self-responder. It wasn't a scientific survey. So whoever felt like responding, responded. Uh, so we'll need to build that into our analysis of it, but I think it gives us some good clues and things to be.
Definitely. I think that's a really valid point. It, it's also, I mean, I think we'll have some maybe more interesting results out of the larger sample sizes. These are still pretty small numbers, but with this set, like the nine hundred some odd um, I don't know, from the online, uh, like, might give us a little bit bigger sample. Yeah. Um, are there, are there questions? I'm trying to get, I see pans are raised. Um, I'm also kind of, I mean, there's, there's just so many, you know, it's all interrelated, as you said. And, um, and it's a lot for, uh, even people who are somewhat immersed in it uh, to kind of take all of that in. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm hoping we can, um, find ways to tie those pieces together to kind of create that. find ways to tie those pieces together to kind of create that context of, you know, here's, here's what that housing means and why you need to have the, the transportation component or the economic development component or you know, and kind of draw, make that story happen for people or make it, you know, more apparent, I guess, if you will.
Yeah. No, I, I think that's a very good point. And it's, it's one of the things when we try to sort of pull things apart so people can see the individual parts.
Yeah.
But at the same time, putting that into the context of all the other things without overwhelming.
Right.
So.
I'm wondering too, kind of going back to the one, it may be a very small sample size, but the, the demographic. Was there any specific outreach done to, to the Squaxton Island Tribe?
Actually, yes, that, that is another process that we're undertaking. Not only the Squaxton Island Tribe, but also the Spawley and the Ishilis. We are inviting them as their sovereign nation. So we're extending an invitation for them to participate in our process in whatever form or manner we wish to do so. We are providing, we're contacting not only the tribal chairman for each of the tribes, but also their, their staff and try to, try to work both ways to, to talk through that process. We will see what the reaction is and what their interest is. They have obviously some very specific things that they're going to be focused on. But again, more property in the city is becoming part of, valuable property. There's more ordinations probably.
Yeah, good. I'm, I'm also kind of wondering if our economic development or nature has maybe some insight into, I'll call it kind of maybe community festivals within certain demographics that might go on, that might be good outreach opportunities to whether, whether strictly business related or just, you know, that's, that's a portion of our community that would be good to reach on a particular occasion where we know we have a lot of people together.
That is definitely something we're looking at. Obviously, we have a parade and other things that we do from the city level, but we're also aware of the community.
I know outreach is really, really hard. I wanted to also, I mean, I'm like the least savvy kind of person on on social media type things, but that just seems like we need to explore that option more. I don't know. Does the city maintain a bunch of different kinds of social media platform type accounts and?
Different, different things that we put out there. We're also very fortunate. Erica did a lot of great work going out to the local businesses and groups to let them know what was going to be happening in terms of the open house and other things. Like to call out Margot, who's just started in our communications department. Also, very much I need to go out and start chatting with people. And so we're we're trying to do all, you know, the broad outreach as well as the individual outreach that is that.
That's tough. And I, I take your point about newspapers. That's, you know, yeah, I'm the era of newspaper of record, kind of a thing, but exploring our options, you know, Jolt or other, other options that are out there that are online. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, I missed, I missed a hand. Go ahead. Okay, Erica, did you have?
Yeah, I was just going to say with communications, we have Margot on board and she has made a huge difference. Well, she's been helping out a lot. And I have noticed with social media, more posts coming from the city of Tomwater. So I'm really excited to have her on board and helping us. And from my experience talking with some of the local businesses that I handed out flyers out, they were pretty excited about it. And really willing to help us by letting us put up our signs and stuff with the promotions. And I think this first open house is just a great way for us to kind of gauge where we need to do more effort or more outreach in different ways.
Very good. Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I also want to throw out that we're in the process, cross your fingers, of hopefully hiring a new senior planner.
Yes.
So we'll have another person to help with this effort. They'll be splitting their time ultimately between current planning and long range, but obviously we do, we need a need of this type work. So hopefully, cross your fingers.
And, and the consultants too, I'm sure. So, yeah. Want to dominate. Other questions, other remarks, ideas? I mean, you know, it sounds like we're off and, off and running, which is totally cool. Any last thoughts, Brandon?
Again, it's, it's, it's just one step in that. Good work.
Go on. That's good. All right. It looks like, just to mention that our next meeting date is actually going to be, forget the date, but late, the, the second.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six or something like that.
And we'll be, we'll be back here in the sun separately.
Okay.
We're not sure if we're going to be here in April. Hopefully know pretty soon whether or not. They're redoing the kitchen at the fire station. They're using our meeting spaces as a temporary kitchen. I know the firemen are quite excited or, or staff over there is very excited to finish that because I had a chat with them yesterday.
That's so. Okay. So just so everybody's clear, the twelfth is canceled, but our next one is the twenty-sixth. So. All right. Any other, any other thoughts, questions? Emotions?
As Commissioner bias, I motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick seconding. All right. It's been moved in, seconded to adjourn our meeting tonight after a great discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you host. All right. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Night.